I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted with the exception of Councilmember Hughes.
And I will note for the record that Ms. Hughes is on her way and will be a couple of minutes late, but plans to join us. All right, will you rise as the honor guard presents the colors, please?
Citizens of White Bear Lake, the flag of your nation, the pledge of power. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, let's jump into item two, A, minutes of the regular city council meeting from May 25th, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
They'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item two, B, minutes of the city council work session from June 3rd, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
They'll move. Second.
The motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved as well. Item three, adoption of the agenda. We have two additions. We're going to add a nine, A, Boatworks Commons Community Room Rental Fees as a discussion item, and then we're going to add a new eleven, closed session, considering the purchase of real property, and the current item eleven adjournment will become item twelve. Unless there are other additions or corrections to the agenda, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
The motion a second. All those in favor adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Item four, consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Item five, A, swearing in of a new police officer. Chief Hager, when you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you again for giving us an opportunity to brag on our newest officer, J.J. Vang, tonight, to celebrate with his family and supporters and loved ones here in the room. We like to, we like to make a big deal about nights like tonight because this is really quite an endeavor that J.J. has gone through over the last couple of years of his life to prepare himself for this, and we just really want to celebrate with him. So thank you for that. Also want to thank the honor guard for doing a great job as well tonight. J.J. was born and raised in St. Paul with his two brothers, who are currently in the military and not able to be here. One sister was here tonight. Growing up, scout, his scout troop played a large role in his life. He even earned an Eagle Scout rank at the age of seventeen, and he graduated from Washington Technology Magnet High School in St. Paul. As a child, J.J.'s father served for a while. The city of Oakdale is a community service officer, which J.J. credits, at least in part, to his desire to be in law enforcement. In the summer after high school, J.J. attended basic training for the Minnesota Army National Guard. While with the National Guard, J.J. spent a lot of time as a recruiter. He also was deployed to Minneapolis during the summer of riots in 2020. Later, he was deployed to Syria and then to Afghanistan to assist with the U.S. withdrawal in 2021. J.J. still serves with the Guard where he earned the rank of sergeant in 2023. Also, in 2023, he started taking classes at Century College, and he started as a security guard for the Abbott Northwestern Hospital in Minneapolis, where he gained a valuable experience and honed his de-escalation skills, and he encountered countless issues related to mental health. I first met J.J. when he sat in my criminal investigations night class a year ago or so. He's quite, he was really a quiet student, but he was one of those students that when he did speak, something meaningful was going to come out of his mouth. In 2024, he earned his Associate of Arts degree for law enforcement, and then he completed his skills program at Hennepin Tech and passed his post-test this last fall. In January of this year, he began his field training program with our department, spent about half his time on days and half his time on overnights. He's a very positive person. One of his, one of his partners at one point in time described him as having great energy. In fact, they'd challenge anybody in the room, with a couple exceptions, to find him without a smile on his face almost the entire day, which is really kind of encouraging to have that kind of person around. After being on days for the first part of his training, he was really excited to go to nights. He kind of like Babe Ruth, he kind of called his shots to say, "I'm going to get in a foot pursuit." He's really excited about a foot pursuit. I would not be so excited about that because I'm pretty sure I wouldn't catch him. But I don't know if it was that night, or it was within a day or so, he and Officer Dillon chased down a domestic assault suspect who fled an apartment building near the dealerships on Highway 61. He's clearly a very athletic person. He's trained in Muay Thai for the last six years. He does Brazilian Jitsu, Jiu-Jitsu, and he boxes. I suspect that someday, real soon, he will be a defensive tactics instructor. I look forward to seeing that. As I said earlier, many of J.J.'s family members, friends and loved ones are here to help us celebrate, including his girlfriend, Nia, his father, Chucky, and his mother, Yea, who will be pinning on his badge here in a little bit. So, J.J., please join our city clerk up front here, so she can issue your oath of office, after which you'll get your badge pinned on.
Please raise your hand and keep it for me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
J.J. Vang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And will discharge.
And will discharge.
And faithfully execute.
And faithfully execute.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties dissolving upon me.
As a police officer for the city of White Bear Lake.
As a police officer of the city of White Bear Lake.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Congratulations.
And now the family of J.J. will take off and head over across the sidewalk here for a little celebration.
All right. Item six, public hearings, nothing scheduled. Item seven, unfinished business, nothing scheduled. Item eight, A, reconsideration of Resolution Number 13519 due to mayoral veto, downtown parking lot project, order project approval plans and specifications, and authorize advertisements for bid. I'll tee this up since it's here because of me. I'll note that you all received a memo from the city attorney that's setting forth the process. I think this is, I don't think, I know this is a first for this council and for me, vetoing anything. So I'm just going to kind of lay out what I put in my memo that I trust you all received a copy of here, and an email this afternoon, and then we can have some discussion about it. If, if you have any questions about process, our city attorney is ready, willing, and able to answer any questions regarding that. So I'll be brief. There's nothing, nothing new that I haven't already said at the dais on several, several other occasions. I thought we had a good public hearing, a good public discussion about the trees, the merits of keeping all of them, some of them, a discussion about the health of each tree. And where it comes down to for me is a kind of a common sense decision. We have four trees, three that the experts have told us are in good health, one that's in declining health, that will require extra expense to try and keep alive. And I think the cost benefit analysis just isn't there. So I think we should keep the three that won't require extra money and ultimately remove the fourth tree. I think that's a logical conclusion, given the lead up to this and the discussion that we had. I continue to have public safety concerns about the fourth tree, both in its current state and the uncertainty of whether it will get better and how long that might take, and what declining tree will, you know, continue to degenerate into by way of more dead branches and potentially falling limbs. And I am concerned about the financial aspect of it. I don't, I don't want to foreclose the notion that, you know, it's not worth spending money on saving trees, but I think this body makes all kinds of decisions every day, and certainly staff does, on a few thousand dollars here, a few thousand dollars there, on very important equipment that the city needs to buy, purchases that we need to make. And this, to me, strikes me as something that could be a bottomless pit of throwing more money at trying to nurse this tree back to health with no guarantees. And I'm equally concerned that if it does continue to decline, and next year, or two years from now, or even five years from now, we ultimately have to remove the tree, that's going to require removing a tree in a relatively new parking lot, ripping up new curb that we've already put down, putting asphalt down, we'll have a patch in a new parking lot. And I just think this is kind of a common sense decision, given all the factors and the totality of the circumstances. I am glad and happy that we are going to keep the three healthy and mature trees. I think we've got a good plan to maintain their, their viability long term, and ultimately, that's, that's where I land on this one. So, I have vetoed the prior resolution, but I do want to make clear that I do support the broader parking lot project. It's going to provide a huge improvement to the downtown area, to public safety through lighting. It's going to make the downtown area look better, better accessibility for those with mobility issues. So I do want us to ultimately approve that tonight. That's the, the second item that's before us. What's currently before the council now is a resolution, or an agenda item for reconsideration of the resolution that was approved at the last council meeting and vetoed. So it's reconsideration of the resolution preserving the fourth tree. That's what's before us, if someone wants to move it and second it and have a discussion on it. So those are my thoughts. And I'll just note that if nobody wants to move the vetoed resolution, or nobody wants to move the resolution for reconsideration, it simply goes away, and if some, we can take up the second resolution, which is the one that was originally brought before the council at the second meeting in May, that follows staff recommendation to remove the fourth tree.
So if you're looking for a motion for that, I'd move the second resolution, the original resolution, to put in front of us.
I have a motion for the resolution as originally brought at the May council meeting that authorizes removal of the fourth tree. Do I have a second on that resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have been a proponent for keeping all four trees, like all along. But I happen to have a failing tree, well, a couple, in my backyard that lost, one of them lost a large branch on the top of a structure, which was troubling to get down. And it just makes me think and consider, okay, so what if a large branch from that oak falls because city staff don't catch it early enough on someone or their vehicle? And I just, I think it's more important that we're moving forward with the redo of the parking lots than preserving this one tree. As sad as that makes me, I would support this resolution.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to take this to a big picture. In fifteen and a half years, this city has had two vetoes. I don't even remember the issue of the first veto. That was during Mayor Emerson's term. This is not a common occurrence, and it's not a reflection of any deep-seated controversy. I suspect that a more reasonable interpretation of the, of the contention is we have different preferences and place priorities in slightly different places. I would assert that the council members who voted in favor of keeping the fourth tree are not spendthrifts. We are not, we place a priority on, I play, I won't speak for the others. I place a priority that we had an unusual outpouring of public commentary and expression of interest. I would note that the, there has not been a demonstrated need for additional parking. Mobility study says that's not a critical need. No individual business requested that we embark on a more aggressive parking plan. And even if individual businesses did not want to expose themselves to, to that position, we didn't hear from the Chamber, from the Economic Development Corporation, or from Main Street, who could have represented those views if they, if they thought this was a burning issue. So, I'm not particularly swayed by that. In a 1.4, 1.2, 1.4 million-dollar project, that's, we're, it's going to cost us two grand to take it down now, and it would have cost us a grand to treat it and buy some time. So, the, the financial impacts are minimal. I would almost dare say miniscule, but it's symbolically important. I don't want to pick nits with the mayor's purpose of vetoing. I'm simply going to say, I'm going to ask for two things. The tree represents a symbolic connection to the founding of our, the history of our community. This thing was growing prior to our incorporation as a city. There may be some value in, and I would take this to a, to a non-governmental expenditure, perhaps the Historical Society, perhaps some, the Environmental Advisory Commission, I've heard from both, expressing a desire to see if there might be a way of salvaging wood, cutting it, that those tree, that tree would have a whole bunch of two-by-fours or one-by-sixes or whatever we might choose. And there might be a project to build a bench, to build, to build picnic tables, to build something that might be a way of recognizing and remembering the values of our community and the historic connection, even if the tree is not allowed to stand. And I personally will do the work to try and determine whether or not that is a suitable, non-governmental expenditure. Would look for some cooperation from the city in terms of timing and so forth, but that's a conversation I would like to advance. The second piece that I'd like to raise is that in asking us to see the forest for the tree, we have an urban forest issue. This is just a very visible spot for one of over 2,000 dead ash trees in, on public property, and numerous, numerous others on private property, not just ash, but a whole bunch of stuff. And I will use this as, as a time to say, we need to advance our conversations on how do we maintain and sustain a vibrant urban forest in our community. And I will look forward to working with council and staff and pursuing that. I will, for the reasons the mayor noted, I will, too, will support the project as amended.
Thank you. Our city attorney has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I would just, before the council votes, point out just kind of a housekeeping matter, that resolution that's before you for vote right now was the original resolution staff had brought to council a couple of weeks ago. So there are two dates toward the end of it that just need to be pushed back by two weeks, and so we're two weeks down the line. So I guess I would just confirm with Councilmember Walsh and Councilmember Engstrand, who made the motion and seconded it, that they would incorporate as a friendly amendment, pushing those two dates back by two weeks before the resolution is finalized and signed.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks for the catch.
Yes, thank you. Good catch. I do want to respond to Councilmember Edberg, and with a, a thing I agree on and a point that I just want to highlight because we are having a broader discussion. I agree that the people that, the council members that voted in favor of this aren't spendthrift and are trying to make, waste money. And I, I'll take it at face value that it was a policy decision that whatever money it costed, it was well-spent and worth it for the importance of the fourth tree. I understand that. The part that I do want to disagree on, and it's part of a broader conversation about what I see our role as, as elected officials, is it's not just a couple thousand dollars or $3,000. It's that right now, and then continued treatment, depending on where, what direction it goes. And I don't really want to get into the merits of the tree because I think we've already spoken about that. But at least from my perspective in this chair, for the remainder of the six months or so that I'm mayor, I do want us to think more granular about those two, three, four, $5,000 decisions. Because yes, it is a 50-plus million-dollar budget, but all those little decisions do add up to a lot. And this, to me, was a pretty clear one, where the benefit we potentially would receive wasn't worth even two or three or $4,000, which is still a lot of money. A Lucas machine that we keep on the ambulance, that's the artificial machine that, that provides CPR, it's about $4,000 or $5,000. We, we make decisions like that on when do we need to replace it, what's the useful life. Those kind of decisions are made across the board, and this was one that was before us. So, $2,000, $3,000, it is a lot of money at scale. I think of someone like myself, my adjusted proportionate share of my property taxes, that's like four or five of me in the community. It is a lot of money. So I do take it seriously. And I don't suggest, Councilmember Edberg, that you don't, but I think those kind of granular, granular decisions are important for us to really dig into as we get into these issues. As far as the urban forest and other tree issue, I agree. We've got to solve that. We've got a huge expense with the ash trees, and a topic for another day, but we, we do need to address that. All right, any other comments on this discussion? If not, I have a motion and a second before us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution with the friendly amendment is approved. Item nine, A, under discussion, Boatworks Commons Community Room Rental Fees. Councilmember West, I believe you wanted this on the agenda, so whenever you're ready, let us know your thoughts, and we'll discuss.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I was reached out to by a community member who is, lives in White Bear Lake, but has a nonprofit that is not a White Bear Lake-based nonprofit. And they want to use the Boatworks Commons, but have an objection or interest in looking at the rate of it. So right now, for a, like a nonprofit or a group from outside of White Bear Lake, it is $500 minimum. Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. And then for a resident, it is $50. And there's a little bit of lack of clarity on the, between the website and the documentation, like the form that you have to fill out, but it's, it's pretty clear on the website what the requirement is. So I just wanted to kind of bring this up as a conversation. Honestly, I don't know if I'm, like, in favor of it or not, because I want to, I want to kind of know more about what the use is right now, kind of what that could potentially do, and all of that, so.
All right, this is a discussion item. Anyone in the council have a thought, an opinion? Councilmember Walsh.
I've been where you are. I think I asked for this a few years ago. I think the, the original memo I asked for is in that packet. Yeah, I mean, we kind of, we kind of go, we revisit this every so often and then remind ourselves why we're doing what we're doing, I think. It's just $500 is a lot of money to rent the space, you know, that's, and that's what would cost any of us to rent it if we wanted to have a graduation party or something there. But there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot going on. One, you can see it in the memo, I think, but the, the things that convinced me to just not change anything, you know, one of the original things when we, when we did it originally, I shouldn't say we, I wasn't on the council, although actually sort of built it and then worked on the policy after it was up and running. So I might have been on the council after we, after we started going, saying, we don't want to compete with other event centers in town. So that's one, one factor is, you know, you've got Kellerman's, you've got some other places in town that do this for money. So if we start doing competitive rates, then we are competing with businesses in town, which is something we just really, I don't want to do as a policy, on a policy level. If we started, if we tried to do this and at competitive rates, we're going to, we're going to end up having to hire somebody. I mean, I think that's the other problem. We're going to need another staff person to staff this thing, clean up afterwards, handle the reservations. Right now, it's not that, use that often, so it's not a, I mean, it is a burden, but it's not an overwhelming burden where we have to hire half a person or a person to do it. So I'm not interested in growing the staff to be in the business of running an event center. And then the last thing, just living in that building, there are people that live in an apartment directly above this, so it's a little unique, you know, so, you know, we can have, they know what they're doing when they moved in there, for sure. But, but you can't really start doing, you know, quinceaera party, parties, or things, you know, they go into the night and have loud music and things like that, so. So there's limits on this space, I think. So, I've gone down this road, Councilmember West, just like you are, and every time I do, I end up back in the same spot, which is not to change it, keep the price expensive on purpose almost. And then, you know, nonprofits, local nonprofits can use it, which is a good thing.
Any other comments, thoughts, opinions? Well, I'll just partially echo that. I, going in, I guess I didn't look at it from the standpoint of a resident who was also, has a nonprofit that is not within the city. Because I think it's, I don't think anything needs to change from that standpoint. If, if you're an actual City of White Bear Lake nonprofit, you get it for the reduced rate. That's a, a very small little market, but that's the availability for that, that accommodation. What's interesting with a resident, yeah, I don't know how you scoop that up and address the exact issue that was posed to you without also saying any nonprofit period, regardless of where you are, can also get that reduced rate, which I have no desire to do. I'm okay with that kind of being an infrequently used room. Quite frankly, given its age is a reason it's in such great condition, is because it doesn't get used that much. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. So I don't see a need to, to change anything, but I think it's fair to bring it before the council because it's an honest inquiry from a resident. But I've got no appetite to change the fee schedule. I think it's, it's good as is. Councilmember Edberg.
When's the next time that we would be reviewing rental rates? Is that part of our annual rental rate setting that we do in, like, what, December, January type thing?
Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, yes, we do review the fee schedule on an annual basis, and that is in November and December, and it's adopted annually for January. But it was my understanding, it wasn't only really the fee, it was the ability to use, which I think is a broader discussion that you may, correct me if I'm wrong, that, Councilmember West, you may have wanted to have tonight. West, you may have wanted to have tonight in addition to a fee. Because we will bring you the fee schedule always, but if it's, if there's, if something isn't clear, then, you know, I would be looking for direction from the council to clear that up. Or if there's a suggested policy change, consensus of the council will bring something back to you to review. Again, correct me if I misunderstood.
Yeah, I don't know if anything needs to be cleared up. I mean, I think one person has an issue, but I don't know if that's necessarily indicative of widespread confusion on it. Councilmember Hughes.
I'm confused right now. So they can't, I'm confused. Somebody can't use it?
Can use it.
Right, but, so they pay.
Mayor, Councilmember Hughes, I wasn't the recipient of the email, so I'm paraphrasing, I think, here that it's a resident who is the president of a non-White Bear Lake nonprofit, and they're requesting to use it at a lesser rate. When this has come before staff, it was a request to waive the fee entirely, but it's a non-White Bear Lake nonprofit, therefore I have been the one that has said no, because we open ourselves up to many other requests. This is not infrequent, and we've been consistent with that.
Right. So the rules are it's $50 for a White Bear Lake nonprofit.
It's free for a White Bear Lake nonprofit.
So what is the $50?
So private party is $500 for four hours, which includes us setting up and tearing down.
Okay. So that's the rule. If you're not a White Bear Lake nonprofit, it costs $500, whether you're someone who wants to have a birthday party, whether you're a resident of White Bear from St. Paul, whether you're a nonprofit that's outside of White Bear anywhere, that's the fee. So I don't think that's confusing, and maybe we need to be clear on the website, but that's, I think, more of a, on a staff level, how we, how we just message that better so that there's not confusion. It seems it's a pretty small group. It's, here's the, here's the waived fee if you are a nonprofit that is, whose address is in the city of White Bear Lake. That's the only exception to the $500 charge. Everybody else, don't ask. If you can't check that box, it's $500. That seems pretty simple. And I'm, from a policy standpoint, I'm okay with that. Councilmember Hughes.
One more stupid question. Is there a $50 charge somewhere to somebody? Or did I just mishear that somewhere totally wrong? There's only zero for a White Bear Lake nonprofit, or everything else is $500?
Mayor, members of the council, so just to do a complete overview, so we all are on the same page. A White Bear Lake-based civic or nonprofit, less than 20 people is free. White Bear Lake-based civic nonprofit that's greater than 20 people is $50. So that cost would probably cover the cleaning costs. And then all other groups, resident, private, corporate, $500.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's very helpful. All right. Any other thoughts on this? Okay. It's fair game to bring it up again when we talk about fees in the fall and we start that process, but for now, it'll stay as is. All right. Item 10, communication from the city manager, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Coppe, I have three slides tonight. So we are embarking on summer, which means all things events in White Bear Lake. Market Fest starts on June 19th. Of course, downtown White Bear Lake, it's the Manitou Days kickoff and, which leads into Manitou Days, which is June 19th through July 4th. The parade is on June 20th at 6:30 PM. City council, I did send you an email today to request that you show up promptly at 5:45 to be part of the parade, just me outside the public safety facility, and we'll get you on that, on the La France. The beach dance is also the same evening on June 20th from 8 to 11 PM. There's a fee for that. Fridays with firefighters, our first one of the season is also on June 20th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the South Fire Station. And then a reminder to council and just announcement to the community, we have a speech landing, rededication, and monument unveiling on June 24th. It's just ahead of our next city council meeting, so that is from 5 to 6 PM at Matoska Park. So those are the upcoming events for the next couple of weeks. We do have a municipal election this year. We do have three candidates, or persons who filed for candidacy for mayoral, for the mayor seat. So that means we will have a primary election, which is on Tuesday, August 12th. And I just wanted to, the city clerk was generous enough to put together this slide for the public to outline, you know, in-person absentee voting, absentee ballot voting, and then Election Day, you'll vote at your regular polling place for that, and then early voting can be done at Ramsey County Elections Office in St. Paul. There are extended hours on August 9th for that, but we can, you know, share out this information on our social media as it gets closer, too. And then to follow up with that, city council, Mayor, city council, this is a question for you. So we have a regular city council meeting that is now scheduled on Wednesday, the 13th. The council, you approved that on January 14th. So our regular day was August 12th, but because we have a primary, that got moved to the 13th. The primary must be canvassed within three days of the primary, so by Friday, August 15th. And so I'm asking you here tonight, we have a couple of options. Do you want to have two separate city council meetings? One on the 13th, and then the second one to canvas the results on the 14th or the 15th? Or do you want to move the city council meeting so you have your regularly scheduled council meeting? My recommendation would be Thursday, August 14th, and include the canvassing of the results. So take a second to ponder on that, but we do either need to move it or schedule another meeting.
I'd move it.
I don't have my calendar with me, and I know that I've got some other travel that week, but I, we need to make a decision now. I'd say move it to one, one night. Can we do one night, can we canvas on Wednesday night?
No, because the, well, no, Kelly.
Mayor, members of the council, the abstract for those primary results won't be available until Thursday. So though we could canvas them as early as Wednesday, it won't be available, so it'd be Thursday or Friday.
To me, doing one meeting on the Thursday, the 14th makes sense.
I won't stand in the way if that's what accommodates everyone. I can't make the 13th or the 14th, so it wouldn't be the first time I've been gone, might be the second. So it's really a question for Councilmember Edberg. You'd have to fill in, but.
Let me get home to my calendar.
Okay. It sounds like we can punt on this and decide at a later date.
Yes, I'll follow up maybe in a week or so.
Couple of days.
Couple of days, we'll be fine. And we'll get back to everyone and update our website with when the city council will be meeting. So that is what I have for tonight. Thank you.
I have one question for you, Ms. Crawford. So the city has to hold the primary. Is there a cost associated with, to the city for holding the primary?
Mayor Lewis, yes, there is a cost. It is, it is rolled into our original contract, which is something that we learned about, you know, I think on yesterday. But the cost of a primary election is about $54,000 to the city of White Bear Lake, and the primary is in, is outlined in our city charter. So Councilmember Engstrand, I was incorrect. I told you that earlier, too. I'm learning every day. So, but it is outlined in our city charter that if we have, we'd have a primary.
We have a primary. I just want to clarify that. So our contract with the county, it's included, or is that, there is, I'm trying to understand, is that an extra $54,000 that wouldn't have to be spent but for the fact that we happen to need a primary?
It is not an extra $54,000.
Okay. It's built in. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you be available on the 15th? You noted the 12th, oh, the.
Yeah. I think, I think I can move flights to make sure I'm back by Friday. So if we could do a Tuesday and a Friday, I can make that work.
Tuesday. We can't do Tuesday.
Oh, hang on a second. Councilman Wednesday.
Wednesday. Tuesday would have been our regular day. We cannot meet on Election Day.
No, I'm understanding it. Okay. Yeah, I, there's no point in fumbling in a meeting anymore. Follow up in a couple of days and we'll, we'll look at calendars.
Thank you.
I won't be here Friday. I won't be here on that Friday.
All right. Item 11, we have a closed session. So for those in the audience, for all intents and purposes, we're done. I have to read some things pursuant to the statute, and then we will close the meeting and ask you all to adjourn. We now need to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C3, which authorizes the council developer, consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. The address of the property to consider an offer for purchase is 2230 County Road E East. Therefore, I request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C3 to discuss the above described matters.
So moved.
Wait a second. All those in favor say aye. We are now in closed session.